All right, I'll call the Wednesday, April 9, 2025, meeting of the Essex Junction City Council to order. Are there any agenda additions or changes?
I do not have any.
Great. We'll move on to public to be heard. It's a portion of the meeting where members of the public can bring comments, questions, concerns to the city council. We have no one in the room that's interested. I see Risa Maron's hand up online. So, Risa, if you'd like to join us.
Thank you, Raj. I have two quick questions, if I may. The first is, do we know yet if any of our federal grant money is earmarked to be removed? And are there any that we're concerned about right now? My second question is, I went to look at the meeting from last week's or two weeks ago Governance Committee, and I needed to log into Microsoft Teams, which I did, and then it told me I wasn't allowed to see the content because I'm not added to the account. Isn't, aren't all committee meetings public and archives open to the public? Thank you.
Grants first.
Yes, so grants, we basically have two that we've been trying to keep track of. One paused, one funding source was paused. That was for the Connect the Junction project, which is a RACE grant through the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. That we have confirmation that that is good to go. So we are back moving on that project. And just so folks know, while I have the opportunity, the city council and the planning commission will be having a joint meeting on May 1st to have a presentation on that report. Then we will have public engagement following that. The other grant that we have been more worried about is the Amtrak grant. So we are not obligated, in the obligating category, which is the ideal place where we would like to be. So we are moving forward on all the steps that we need to follow in order to get obligated, but we will not know 100% until we get to that point, whether that's going to come through or not.
Thank you, Regina.
Then we will definitely look into that team's issue 100%. That meeting is supposed to be open and available for anybody to join and participate in that way. So we will get that sorted out.
Okay, including seeing the, when I went to the website, I missed the meeting. And so when I went to the website to look at what the meeting was, because it shows that it's been filed and it can be watched, that's where I was stymied and wasn't able to, once I logged in, it was that I wasn't added to the account, so I'm not authorized to see anything.
Awesome. Thanks for that specificity. We can figure that out.
Yeah, Microsoft permissions are a tricky thing. So we'll get it sorted out and probably won't happen again.
Great, thank you very much.
Certainly not intentional.
Thank you.
And as a reminder, there is a meeting tomorrow night.
Yes.
Excellent. All right, is there anyone else online that, or in the room that has anything they want to share? Does not look like it, certainly not in the room. So we're going to move on to 5A, a public hearing on Stormwater Utility Ordinance 21. And we have Chelsea Manigo with us. For our, I want to think it's, is it our third public hearing on this? It's not fourth, must be third.
Third public hearing.
But third only on this chapter. Yeah. All right. Can you see the presentation? Awesome. All right, so I'll jump right in. If you have, some of you have seen most of this presentation before, since it is the third iteration. Fourth overall for all the stormwater-related ordinances we've been trying to get passed. So, oops. So what I'm going to be talking about tonight is stormwater management in general. Just to let you know how the city manages it, and the goal of why we're forming this utility, how the stormwater utility is formed and calculated, what the credit manual entails, and then the the chapter itself, Chapter 21, which will officially establish the stormwater utility once passed. So why manage stormwater? Because human development has disrupted the natural cycle of water moving through the environment. It's causing it to run off of the environment rather than infiltrating. And so that's carrying that excess nutrients and sediment and pollutants into our waterways. In Vermont, we are particularly, or this part of Vermont, I should say, we're particularly concerned about the Lake Champlain Basin having too much phosphorus. And so that is what we're regulated on, and that can lead to cost, to cause toxic algae blooms. So a little bit of history of stormwater management in the United States and in Vermont. So stormwater management was actually created in 1972 as part of the Federal Clean Water Act. And it created a series of permits that require states to manage and reduce the amount of stormwater runoff to improve water quality. And so that permit is called an MS4 permit, and that is what we are, the city itself, has to comply with. And that stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. Then we also have the Lake Champlain Total Maximum Daily Load, which really is like an accounting of how much phosphorus the lake can handle and still be healthy. So that is why we need to reduce the amount of stormwater runoff, in particular sediment in the stormwater, so that we can try to meet those targets set by the federal government. And so we have until 2036 to meet those deadlines. So some of our permit, MS4 permit, requires us, again, to reduce, as I mentioned, to reduce the amount of stormwater runoff into our stormwater impaired streams. In the city, we have two stormwater impaired streams, Indian Brook and Sunderland Brook. So a lot of the projects we've implemented to date have focused on that portion of the work, like our gravel wetlands to locate in the city. But then we also have to reduce the amount of phosphorus, which is going to involve building some more projects. And we are split into two different watersheds for that, Mallett's Bay and Main Lake for Lake Champlain. We also have aging infrastructure in the city for stormwater pipes. So we have our catch basin system in the street. A lot of those pipes are corrugated metal. And so those, and they were installed over 20, 30 years ago, and they degrade over time. So we have a lot of aging infrastructure that we are addressing, but also still needs to be addressed. So all of what I just talked about is why we need a stormwater utility. So a stormwater utility is a way to fund and try to meet these stormwater requirements and keeping of our system. And because we can't measure stormwater, like you can sewer and water usage on a property, we use something called impervious area. And we're not alone in this type of way to fund stormwater projects and management and programs. We're one of the last communities that, on the list, or a handful, I should say, that have the MS4 permit requirements to establish the utility. So other reasons to form a utility provides a fair and equitable and stable source of funding. Currently, in this budget cycle, stormwater is funded through the general fund, which is based on property taxes. Also, when we separated from the town, we lost stormwater capital project funds. That was something that was joint between the two communities. So that is something that we need to get established again so we can work on meeting our requirements for the phosphorus to a maximum daily load. So how did we measure the impervious surface in the city, or area, I should say? Impervious area by definition is defined as developed areas of land that prevent or significantly impede the infiltration of stormwater in the soil. So in this example, on the right here, anything that's highlighted in this light blue color is considered impervious surface. So that includes parking lots and rooftops and sidewalks, stuff like that. And that, the units that that equates to in the stormwater utility world is called equivalent residential unit. And so you, we did a, consulted an assessment and measured what the average, or excuse me, the median amount of impervious area in the city is on all parcels. And that came out to be 280, 2,823 square feet. So that is what is going to be considered one equivalent unit, because that's the median amount. And that's what's going to be assigned to single-family parcel, which you'll see in the next slide. And then for all other properties that are not classified as single-family residential, they will be, we will actually did an exercise to measure the amount of impervious area on the parcel. So how are these two different types of properties defined? So single-family residential is considered one to three units. And so if you have one to three units on your property, you're single-family residential. However, it's a little tricky with some of the condo developments we have in the city. So we did a further assessment. And because we are trying, this is going to be tied to your utility bill, we looked at how some of these are billed and made a judgment on if they are, if you already have a single water meter or a master meter that then is divided amongst an HOA. So that's how that was developed. And then if you're just this non-residential-type property, like commercial properties, then you're just classified as non-single-family residential. This is saying a very similar thing, excluding the condos, but it's kind of showing you how you get, you calculate how many ERUs assigned to your property. So single-family homes are, is just one, there's no calculation. And it's really just pertinent to non-single-family residential homes or properties, I should say. And so we take that measured amount and we divide it by what is established as the one ERU, which is again that 2,823 square feet. And then we do have a credit program that we'll talk about in a moment. So here are some examples, and these are actual parcels in the city. So we have just typical single-family residential property. There's your, the light blue again is highlighting the impervious area. So that's just the set rate of 2,823 square feet, which would be assigned one ERU. This annual fee, this hasn't been set, so this is a number that we were working around, but you can ignore that for now, but it is a general ballpark Eric number. Then here's another commercial property where this is the amount of impervious area that was measured. And then you just divide that number by what our rate for one ERU is, the 2,823. And then that's how you get your 20 ERUs. So this property, we get 20 ERUs times whatever that rate for one ERU is going to be for the fiscal year, and that's how you find out your fee. And then we also are, another benefit of the utility is that includes tax-exempt properties. So this is an example of a tax-exempt property and how many ERUs have been assigned to the property. So credit manual, so you can receive a credit towards your stormwater utility bill if basically you have stormwater infrastructure or do something to improve stormwater management on your property, but it's only for non-single-family residential parcels. And it's going to be through an application process online or through the mail. And it's going to be capped at 50% of the assessed fee for the parcel. But at a minimum, you have to pay the rate of one equivalent residential unit. So these are some of the categories that have been established in the credit manual. Most of it focuses around the stormwater treatment practices that you might have and how it aligns with the Vermont Stormwater Management Manual, which is really what governs how you build stormwater management in the state. And really, the better that your stormwater practice does for water quality, and especially infiltrating it through the soil and removing that excess phosphorus, the more credit you'll receive. There's also a specific credit for those that already have MS4 and TS4, which is V-Trans TS4, they have the same type of requirement as us. That is capped at 35%. And then there's also an education credit for the school systems. If you're teaching about stormwater, you can get up to a 10% credit. We are going to have a recertification process to, really related to the stormwater treatment practices, to ensure that they are still functioning as intended and designed. I know it's going to be a pretty simple process. It's just a check-in, really. So to the reason why we're having another public hearing is that the Chapter 21, which is an ordinance that is being proposed to, that will form the utility, and it outlines the in and out of the utility, how it's going to be administered, the procedures of the utility, how we came up with the assignment of ERUs, the credit manual, or referring to the credit manual, the billing collection policies, and then also how we're officially establishing enterprise fund. The reason why we're having this hearing again is because since the hearing in the beginning of the, actually, last hearing we had was in December of 2024 for this chapter, the exemption list of who is not part of the utility has been revised. So this, it is now being revised to include Global Foundries. And we also added references to a state statute that needed to be in here. So what's next is, as part of the enterprise budget process, in May and June, we'll be setting the ERU rate. And then the first round of stormwater utility bills will go out this October on your utility bills. And this is my contact information for any further questions.
Thank you, Chelsea. Regina, do you have anything you wanted to?
Yeah, just two things I wanted to add. So in, when we get to the business item tonight, I just want to make this clear at this point, under the public hearing part, we are recommending an additional credit option that will, that is explained a bit more down in the memo, but essentially it is acknowledging the the variety of different permits that exist and the amount of work that folks, some of the larger properties have to do to achieve their own separate permits. So that's an additional 10% credit where we're recommending that sort of 10% is there as a base, and then you can continue to get only up to 50%, but that 10% could apply early. The one other thing that we are recommending later on is a slight tweak to the ordinance, which kind of removes the specificity of the types of credits so that we can keep that clean. And going forward, we can adjust the credit manual as necessary to make sure we've got it doing what we want to do for folks. So this will not be our, if, if the council so chooses at that point, just so folks are clear, this will not necessarily be our last public hearing.
Gotcha. So as this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the, in the audience that has any questions or comments they want to make about this? And if so, come on up to the microphone. Tim, we know who you are, but for the record, if you just identify yourself and share your thoughts.
Good evening. Tim Shea, Executive Director of the Champlain Valley Exposition. And we enjoyed hosting the elections there yesterday and look forward to the next elections. Appreciate the time on this. And I have shared a letter with Regina back in November, kind of sharing our thoughts, our concerns. So I'm probably repeating what we said already, but we're the proud owner of 33 acres of impervious surface. All but 28, all, all but five of those acres are being treated by our storm, our existing stormwater retention system. And to meet state requirements, we need to expand our stormwater retention efforts, which we'll be doing this summer at a minimum cost of $1.5 million to treat this water, treat the stormwater. And we, based on this formula, we have 484 ERUs. So at $72, that's an annual fee of $35,000, which is an, you know, an enormous amount of money for a nonprofit organization. I would just ask, and I'm encouraged by the discussion on the credits, if the discussion can continue on the credits as a way to, I don't want to say make us whole, but again, the money that we were required to put in for the state is significant to us. And to have this, whatever that number turns out to be with the credits on an annual basis is significant to us. It will affect our programming, affect what we can do, affect the renovations that we can make. We just can't pass on a stormwater utility fee to the fairgoer or to the events that occur at the fair. So I'm encouraged by the discussion about that the credits are continuing to be discussed, negotiated, if that's the right word, and will be, look forward to be part of that conversation.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
I don't see the hands.
Okay. Anyone else in the room? No one online? So I will close the public hearing and move on to Business Item 6A, which is a council discussion in consideration of the Stormwater Utility Ordinance 21 and the Stormwater Utility Credit Manual.
Okay. Go ahead, Chelsea.
Oh, okay. So where I talked about the, the changes to the ordinance, but and really, it's just then the definition of the parcel, the exemption, exemption parcel. It's in the definition section of the manual and then the references in the beginning under the purpose that we had to update. But really what we're looking for, the input from the council tonight on is a couple of different items here. Two related to the credit manual. One is the idea of that 10% credit that Regina just mentioned, recognizing those that are already required to meet federal and state permit requirements. And it would be a 10% credit with a pretty simple application process submitted to me for approval, rather than waiting for like for CVE, for example, waiting for them to install further stormwater infrastructure and get that credit, because they wouldn't be able to get the maximum credit for that infrastructure until it's installed. This would just be a 10% off the bat to recognize them, the work that they're doing. Another credit that is not in this memo that we're, want input on consideration of adding is really to recognize the unique situation of Global Foundries and that they have essentially industrial wastewater permit without it being called that, but the law, almost a good portion of their stormwater go, is treated through their wastewater system. So it's a combined sewer system. So we're looking to potentially add a combined sewer credit of 10% as well. And that would only be for Global Foundries. None of it would apply to ourselves, Essex Junction, because as you, I've probably preached before, but we are a separate wastewater system with no combined sewers, with stormwater in our collection system in either of the three tri-towns. So those are the two credit manual items. And then we also still need input on the budget relating to staff's recommendation of phasing the utility. And the, and that really means for the first year of the utility, we would not have the capital funds as part of the budget, the $125,000, but then implement it in, in year two. Also, then we also need the council to decide if they want to have another public hearing to make the change in the Chapter 21, because we were pretty specific on the categories in the credit manual. And we'd like to adjust that to make it, to not call out what credit are in the credit manual and just refer to it, which actually the ordinance already does, but really just eliminate a sentence so that we can have more flexibility in advising the credit manual as the utility goes into place. And it would not require, the credit manual does not require a public hearing like the ordinance. So we're just trying to give a little bit more flexibility in that. Yes.
I have a clarifying question. With respect to Global, there's an opportunity for them to get this MPDES 10%. And then you're specifying another 10% on top of that. So right off the bat with, seems like at the outset, they're going to be discounted 20%. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
That, just so folks understand, that doesn't mean the overall bill for the stormwater utility goes down. It means that 20% is absorbed by the rest of the ratepayers. Or am I thinking about this in, well, the first part.
It's not going to be 10%. No, it's not going to be straight. It's going to be only, I'm sorry, I remembered that wrong. We're not proposing a 10% credit. We're proposing, actually the, wait, Regina, am I getting myself confused in my notes?
Because I, and the only reason I ask about them in combined is it's different than I understood it until about two minutes ago.
No, the way we said it back is not how we talked about this afternoon, but now I'm getting confused, so.
We've been talking over the last couple of months and how we've shifted from our very original thinking of this is that when we are establishing the utility, everybody is in. There's no exemptions, except ag uses, because those are exempt by state statute. Everybody else is in. So anything, so that's the starting place. Then the credits are applied after we've got that all sorted out. This new 10% credit is to acknowledge folks who've got these other permit place factors on them. Those tend to be our larger properties. They either have three-acre permits or they have the industrial permit that Global has, or they've got new construction stormwater permits. There's a variety of different things that would come into play there. That's, that is likely the level that we would apply off the bat. The rest is proving the treatment credit, like what you're treating on your site, and you've got the ability to apply to get that credit. Global treats a portion of their stormwater through their wastewater treatment facility. That is not a best management practice under the stormwater manual. So what they do there for that portion of their stormwater wouldn't get that credit that the other properties could get. But there's a lot of logic. We're basically allowing up to a 50% credit for people who are treating their stormwater. Global is, they're just doing it through a different mechanism that we've got to spell out in order to be able to apply it. It is, from information that we saw from Global today, it looks to be roughly about 9% of their impervious surface is treated in that way. It's not a huge component of the property, just so you've got sort of a sense of scale of what that means.
I just want to, I guess I was getting confused because it sounded like the way she explained it was an additional, it's fine. I think I totally misunderstood. It sounded like there's one credit generally for everybody, and then we're going to do this for Global as well. So I got confused. I apologize, but.
Yeah, it's still.
I explained that. Wrong. I apologize.
50% maximum. This opportunity for wastewater is just another treatment method that if we just looked at the stormwater management practice, it wouldn't come into play.
Yeah.
So another entity did that, even though it's, and somebody applied to, for that treatment method. Or eight, let me put it this way, if someone else applied for a treatment method that wasn't a best practice, would we be finding a way to facilitate that as well?
If we feel that it's an appropriate way to manage stormwater, yes. It's an industrial property in a very different, different way.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just trying to.
It's a combined sewer overflow system, essentially. Many cities are regu, are regulated and treat their stormwater in that way. So I don't mean to say that it's not an effective method of stormwater. It just is a way to manage stormwater. It's not in the state's Stormwater Best Management Pact Manual because they are very specific to stormwater. You wouldn't build. You wouldn't build a combined sewer system today if you.
It is being treated.
Yes, yes.
We were phosphorus wastewater plant.
Thank you. It just took me a minute. Okay, sorry. It's probably five minutes. We didn't need it. I apologize.
I think it's probably very helpful.
I appreciate it. I don't have any other questions. Is anyone else?
I do.
Marcus.
So one of the things I was thinking about in regard to the credit and I'm, I hear Raj, your concern and I'm, I, I'm with you, but I'm, the way that I'm thinking about this as well as because right now we're establishing this utility and we're trying to accommodate these circumstances. We're trying to be mindful of this whole thing, but at the same time, I'm thinking in the long term in regard to this 10% application. Because it feels like to me that if we were thinking about the future and thinking about developers, again, recognizing the fact that we're less than five square miles, there's not a lot of places developed. But if we are establishing this in a way that the future, a future developer came in, if they were to build something and then build with that intention of adding those components to be able to manage that stormwater to follow their own regulation, to follow, you know, whatever they're doing. It feels like that 10% should be, it should be, we should have that 50% credit program, you know, that allowance, but that 10% is separate from that. Versus it's, you can automatically get this 10%, but you'll never max out. You'll, you'll never get beyond 50%. Feels like we could use it as an incentive for future development by having it not being overlapping credit. I'm not sure if we have an example of how it, I'm not sure if this came from an example in another municipality. But I just wanted to mention that because that's the way I was thinking about it in terms of, again, future development and whether or not we can encourage that future development to build in a way that would take that burden off of us. And I understand it's not, it's not a direct correlation. I know the difficulty there. I'm just, that's what I'm thinking. Anyway.
I think this whole system is so regulated that that incentive is not necessary from a permitting perspective. The 10% is assuming these folks are forced. I'll use strong language to achieve stormwater regulation. It's going to happen no matter what. We are trying to acknowledge on, on our side that that is true. So trying to acknowledge that in some way, shape or form. The, yeah, then just the further 40% credit that you could get in addition to that is really if you are, once you actually do treat your wastewater in that way, if that, that helps.
Amber, anything? Can you?
So what is the likelihood that larger parcels would actually achieve 50%?
I think we can only, I think all we know can say is that in the other utilities, there are not many folks taking advantage of the credit. I think we are in a somewhat unique situation where we are developing our utility at the same time that folks are having to grapple with the three acre permit. The other communities, they set that up. So these properties have been paying the stormwater utility all this time, then they're taking on the three acre costs as well.
And our municipalities are partnering with the three acre permits because they need more projects. We're not in that case. I'm not, we're not part, we haven't partnered with any three acre parcels. And I don't plan to.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So we've got a number of questions. I think we could start any which way, but I would suggest we start with the question of do we want to phase this in by, it seems like the simplest question to begin with, we want to phase this in by removing capital from the program for one year, which takes about 125,000 out of it, which lowers everyone's rate. Is that straw poll, is that amenable to everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, great. That's off, that's good. Do we want to do the, try to think of these in order because I could have written them down. Do we want to apply the 10%? We want to add the 10% credit to the credit manual for those folks with existing permits?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Do we want to remove the, do we want to amend ordinance 21 as written to remove the reference to the specific permits and put that in the credit manual? Great. Sounds good. And help me out here. I think that is generally speaking it.
So we had one more question we added to you tonight, which is the question of adding a credit manual option for a combined sewer treatment.
Maybe that's what I was thinking. Yeah, all right. Thoughts on that? Does anybody know what that is? Like eight minutes ago?
That's to address.
Specifically, yes. Speaking by myself first and foremost, I know it was only eight minutes ago, but.
That's to address the special circumstances of Global.
Right.
Like Chelsea said, there's only two folks who have treatment facilities in the city, us. We don't have a combined, we don't have anything combined and Global has a combined system.
Okay.
Can I ask a good question that it won't have any bearing on this decision, but I'm curious because I was thinking about this as Chelsea was presenting it. I'm sorry, I didn't ask it earlier. Just out of curiosity, on the bill, do you intend that it will show the number of ERUs that a particular property has with that rate?
I do not know that answer. I know our intention is to be very clear that it's the stormwater utility, though, you know, we listed out. Whether it will actually have the ERU number, I do not know that answer.
Yes, no. Hi. I can't definitively answer that question yet. The intention is, yeah, no, it's fine. The intention is to have the ERUs documented within each account in the utility billing system. It's just a matter of working with Nemrick to figure out what exactly will show up on the bill. If it doesn't show up, I'm hoping that they can do a custom bill template for us so that it will show the ERUs or at the very least, it's going to show your, whether you're an SFR rate or an NSFR rate. ERUs is to be determined.
Okay. So it looks like we are going with option two for a motion, which is, it's the last one there, right Regina?
Sorry, did I miss? Was there a decision on the 10%?
Yes. That was yes.
Okay. I don't mean 10%. I shouldn't have said that out loud, but combined sewer credit.
Yes.
Okay.
So before I keep going, I'm apparently Dr. Confusion tonight. What is the maximum credit then for if we're doing the combined, for adding the combined stormwater sewer portion to the credit manual, which only applies to Global? Again, I guess I'll ask my question. How much are they likely to achieve right off? Just so they'll get, do they have to do anything? How, what is that credit then for that particular portion? Does that make sense? Am I asking correctly?
That's where I misspoke earlier. It's going to be, they provided us really the information that already and they were kind enough to measure that they already had this documentation of square square feet area of what's already going through the treatment plant for stormwater. And so we were planning on assessing that to their total amount of measured square area and making that a percentage.
That, thank you.
Regina mentioned.
Gotcha. All right. That makes much more sense to me now. Thank you. I will try to do better.
Yeah. And just to, sorry, one more note before we wrap this up. So the exact rate, the exact way all of this works out, we need this guidance from you folks tonight in order to be able to figure this out. So and if you just do everything as we just talked about, we're going to have another public hearing at the next meeting for the ordinance particularly. And then, as you know, along with all your other utility enterprise budgets, you're going to have further council action on those and setting the rates, May and June.
That make sense?
Yes.
Great. And so Regina, we're clear. We basically approved everything.
Yes.
We're going to approve everything. All right. So are there any questions from anyone in the room on this business item before we move forward or anyone on Zoom? I don't see any hands in the room and I don't see any hands raised on Zoom. Give it another second or two. I don't see anyone, so I will move that the city council warrant a public hearing on April 23, 2025 at 6:30 PM to receive comment on changes to the Essex Junction Municipal Ordinance Chapter 21 and ordinance relating to stormwater utility regulation and the stormwater user fee credit manual as amended and with any edits as discussed. Great. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Great. Pastor Nelson, thank you. Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Yep.
All right. Business item six B, discussion in consideration of Tulaken renovation update and reassignment of funds. He's right here.
All right.
John, I'm anticipating some input from you, so come on up.
Good to see you.
When it's time, please introduce yourself, even though we know who you are.
John Alden, architect at Scott &amp; Partners and architect, team leader of the renovations at Tulaken Hall.
Great.
I have all the answers.
Oh, why? You do?
Someone. What's our moving date?
Except that one. Actually, they're aim, they do have a, they do have a contract date extension based on the extra work that they've been doing. Pin down, I just don't remember what it is. It's this, this it's 20 some days after it's.
Yeah. So it's early July, I would just say. Still subject to change. So essentially what the memo that you've got in front of you just describes sort of the history to date of this project, kind of the buckets of sort of big changes and discovery since in sailing into this exciting project. And then we've got some detail on kind of the cost and essentially hoping to allocate another 500,000 to this project essentially. John can give some better detail and descriptions of what has been going on with the project and why we're in this position of needing to get more money allocated to it. I will just say it's a significant labor of love bringing this project forward. It's going to be very exciting. It's going to be really, really great for the city for a very, very, very long time to come. It is just very complicated and very costly.
Great introduction.
I'll follow that by saying it's not that costly. We just all had a much more optimistic view of it going into it. And if you will remember when we started this, I said there will be a cost that this project has. That's just what needs to happen in order for this to really work. And we can use a figure, for example, what we got in federal funding or whatever you want to use, but, but once you get into the building itself, it will have its own requirements and, and we, none of us could have imagined, I don't want to take that lightly, but none of us could have imagined what we have found and and I hope you guys have been walking through periodically to see the bones and skeleton of this building as they are revealed. It was built as four separate structures at least. They're all different. They all come together in mysterious ways which are concealed by the ceilings and the floors and, and things that we take for granted as being, you know, what we see. However, I've had the pleasure of working on the outside of the building five, six, seven years ago. And it looks great, right? We are, and it's holding up incredibly well. But when we peel the interior, you know, the finishes off the interior side of the exterior wall, which has happened in much of the brick portion of the building, different story. All right. So they weren't as well built as what we see on the outside. They used in, just, you know, the, the sloppier construction in there because it's all hidden by the plaster and lath, so they don't have to care as much. But over time, those portions of the brickwork have deteriorated, the mortar's fallen out, the lath is held onto the wall face by embedding wood strips in the brickwork itself. And those have loosened up and become less than stable. So when you think you're going to reuse the wall because you're just doing something to it and keeping it the way it is, not really happening that way because then you, you touch something and you realize that the rest of the wall is being held up by whatever you thought you were fixing. So you're kind of chasing yourself, you know, uphill a little bit on this and, and so we want to get it back to a place where it's stable, it's sound, it's structurally, you know, reassembled properly. We've had to do a lot of reinforcing structurally of the outside walls, especially in the section of the building. The so-called middle section and the section closest to the library where we're doing a fair amount of work on the inside. That includes stabilizing the roof, which was always part of the project at the beginning, but got value engineered out because we were concerned we didn't have enough money. So we got in there and found that, that there was no way not to do that. So we, we had to do that. While you're in there, you want to insulate and improve your energy efficiency. So we, we repair it properly instead of just kind of putting it back the way it was, stronger. The brick walls were there are three white stick at the bottom, so three rows of brick laterally. And they stepped back to two and then they're supposed to keep going at two. And we found that they stepped back to less than that in some places. So you're really getting thin and they're not stable enough to hold up what we need them to hold up. And, and so we strengthen those and you'll see if you walk through and I, and I really encourage you to see it. We've got pictures if you haven't, you want to take a look there. They're all available, but there's now a nice reinforcing set of steel. Let's say carrying members where there were none before. And those have created the rigidity that we need to hold the brick wall in place, no matter how thick the, the whites are. So that was a little bit of a surprise. And then you have to actually create a new wall plane on the inside. So you can't use the old plaster and lath. They have to use framing and drywall. But the good news is you get to insulate that. So now you have actually a much better wall assembly than you did before and should, should help you with the interior comfort going forward. But you know, again, we didn't expect to need to do all of that. We're, we're happy we did, but you may be less happy. Unless, unless you have to sit next to one of those walls and, and, you know, do your job. So there is a benefit in the long run to the building and, and its long-term prognosis for leading us well into, you know, the next decades and, and beyond as a building that will serve the community, which is. Leading us well into, you know, the next decades and beyond as a building that will serve the community, which is. What we all hoped when we started. So had to do a little more repair work than, than we anticipated, but that's really the bulk of it. There were some other costs associated with. Assessing the G M P, which is the guaranteed maximum price at the beginning. We found out that the contractors had as much trouble finding coverage in some of the bid categories than. You know, as many people do, if you try and hire somebody to go do something, you know, you get what you think is going to be a good bid response and, and we found they actually had a few categories where they had one or no bids. And so they had carried their own price and then their own price was unattainable when it finally got down to actually needing that work to get, to get done, so they had to really beg people to. You know, to do it, and so the. Price went up a bit for that. So I, I think those are really the two biggest categories of surprises for us in, in executing the work. I, we're all hoping that's the, the last of it. You know, in terms of, there'll be some more coordination and surprises and, you know, we expect them to be much smaller and of a cosmetic nature and, and not of. Structural or systemic problem, so. We appreciate your patience and we, we know it's painful, but at the end of the day, this is going to be a tremendous building, much improved. More improved than we expected, but, but much improved going forward.
Pretty much sum it up by saying it's going to be more useful, comfortable. One's last longer. Energy efficient.
And, and some of the things that we found, you may not have noticed unless, you know, there was like, we've, we had an earthquake last year. I don't know if you guys felt it. I, I felt that it was kind of odd. But, you know, every once in a while, there's a little twitch in the ground, you know, and if you've got an old masonry structure, I mean, when you look around the, the country and the rest of the world at the structures that catastrophically fail. It's unreinforced masonry. Or some similar construction method, so we're. Happy to have seen it, had a chance to fix it. I think it's still a, a great use of your resources to, to take care of that building. It's, none of us want to see anything. Happen to it, so you've got more energy efficiency, you've got more insulation, you've got. Better mechanical and electrical systems, code compliant where required. Because you touched it and that includes the fire alarm, which as much as you say you want to do a piece of the fire alarm. We found, you know, some older sections of the wiring that were referred to as lamp cord and we're, we're just, you know. Like when you have a life safety system that you depend on and is there for your own protection and all of the inhabitants and you find out that it's really been, you know. Done long before the requirements were probably in place or whatever, you know, you have to, you have to fix that, so. We'll continue to keep you updated on what we find, if anything else, you know, there, there probably will be some things, but I think we're. We've done most of the discovery and, and they're really turning the corner on putting it all back together. Drywall's on at least probably one side of almost every wall now. The elevator shaft is, is there and visible, the. New stairs are being fabricated, but the hole's there. You can see how the landings work and everything. Most of the upstairs spaces are all framed out and, and they're starting to, again, drywall, everything. So we're, we're really excited. This is the fun part now is, is you really get to see it come back together. And again, I'm, I'm leading tours every week. You're all welcome. We actually reached out to some of the older members of the community that, that, you know, like a Tim German and so forth that. Might have enjoyed seeing it and they just could not get organized to, to come on a, on a tour with us and, and take a look at it, so we. Documented, we found chimneys in places that, you know, nobody probably remember were there and.
I was going to ask, you know, so you mentioned pictures and I didn't, I, I'm just made me remember that I meant to ask this specifically before the construction started as a photographer, but.
Yeah.
I'm really hoping that there's going to be some concerted effort to gather all of that.
Something together and maybe a.
Yeah, talk to Essex Historical Society or, or the folks that, you know, just some way to keep those. Permanently, because.
They will, they will be all turned over to you in a digital file, but I think some. Some. Let's say culling or coordinating of, of the, of, of that material would be great so that maybe we can kind of tell a story about. How it goes.
And if we have an opening, you know, having some posters.
Yeah.
And having some really cool examples for people to see.
We should, definitely there should be an open house and, you know, I don't know what kind of ribbon cutting or something you have, but. It would be fabulous to have an open house and I know that my team, I have a number of people that have worked on this are, are extremely. Passionate about, you know, they're, they love this building. I mean, this, this building is a, is a gem and it's just a pleasure to get a chance to work on it and. And we want, want you all to be proud of it when, when it opens, so.
I have had the pleasure of walking it stripped and bare to see all of the mystery that was behind everything and all of the pieces that. Have come in to shore it up and it was eye-opening. Really, really, really wild what they, what they found and what was there, so.
The other thing I will say too, as a bigger improvement than we had originally intended is. We were intended to focus sprinkler system down in a particular part of the basement. For code compliance and then we ended up just sort of expanding that through the basement itself, which also sets up lines that will make it easier to sprinkler the full building further down the road at some point, so. That would be helpful.
And they're not, they did it so well, I was surprised, but you know, there's not a, a lot of room in some of the basement, you know, you may have had a little trouble walking through there. Hard hat or not, right? But they did a great job of tucking the, the sprinkler lines up, up high. So that the, the two ends of the building, if you will, the one under where the conference room is and so on, that whole end, and then the one where the. Zoning and planning department has some downstairs space. Those are left fairly usable and relatively intact as they, as they were before. The middle section is a little bit more utility and, and mechanical systems and so forth, a lot of piping and whatever, so. They were used occasionally, but. Continually for storage of all kinds of stuff. If you ever got down to see what was in there before the project started, it's kind of nice to see that finally kind of just, you know. Put somewhere else, but you have a nice space down there. It is dry and it's now rated to be officially a storage location, so. Again. Better, improved space to continue. You know, to put your Christmas decorations or whatever down there, so. There was a lot of Little League stuff and, you know, other kinds of. Things that probably hadn't seen the light of day in an awful long time, but yeah.
I'd like to take you up on that, that invitation. I, I have time on Friday. I don't know if we.
I'll be out of town, but I can send someone or we can do it some other.
Maybe we could set a pole around so more of us could go. That'd be awesome.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Great.
Any other comments on this or questions from council on? What we're doing here?
Just, just, you know. Because I feel like the ask, we're, we're in deep, like what, I mean, say, don't. I guess I want to take something away from this as well, you know, what a lesson learned from this. In, in this, through this experience, I mean, was there any way that we could have done a better job of tightening this up to make sure that our initial measures were closer to where. We're coming in at. Reinspection of that. Walls or some, I don't know.
Yeah.
Practices.
That's all is a, and I appreciate the question because, you know, this is a. Situation where there's a couple of things working against you. One was the bidding climate and the, the coverage issues with the subcontracting, but. The other. The other piece. Really requires some significant effort to examine behind the finishes. And, and you, there are some techniques, like you can use. Ground penetrating radar and, and some other things to find, you know, pipes and other foreign objects that are underground. But inside the walls, you know, imagine, you know, like a magic stud finder or something where you're, you're, you know, there's a stud in there, but you know, you don't know exactly, you don't really know there's a stud in there, you just want to believe, like there are no studs. In your outside walls. It's all. It's all brick with wood. Grounds, we call them, but that, that are some thickness buried in the brick. That they fasten the, the lathe to. And, and you know, like really. Like a furring strip looks like an old fashioned wood ruler. It's very thin and, and they, you know, strand it up it. So you don't really know. I mean, you'd have to find something that showed up on some imaging device. And, and then, or you'd have to actually remove portions of the, the walls to see. And, and the, you know, I don't know if you guys have tried that, but it's kind of like drilling a, a hole to find out, you know, so I'm drilling a hole here, but that doesn't mean I know what happened. Two feet away.
We've already heard about some of that.
Yeah.
I mean, some of the early exploration, I think, you know, there were, I think if I remember correctly, there was at least a couple of instances where, yeah, we did some exploring. And a few months later, we actually opened it up and like eight inches over here was like.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, I, it feels like at the time it was pretty good due diligence about.
Yeah.
Trying to discover as best as.
You're never going to know in a building that old, you know.
Well, we did get somewhere around three something million dollars from the federal government to, you know, which, yes, it could have been used for other things. Not a lot of other things.
Then we would never have done this.
But we, we never have been able to, and then we could have ended up five or eight years from now or sooner with the problem with the building and then been. In this discovery phase as we're trying to repair whatever happened to that wall, for instance, and then realizing we need four million dollars to. You know, so I.
You gotta bite the bullet at some point and I, I think, you know, we, we're actually, you know, I keep talking to the, the contracting arm at Red Loaf and they're kind of like. I can't believe we're doing it for this much money, you know, like they feel like you're getting a great deal and I, you know, we're all, you know, clawing for every penny and nickel and, and, you know, to kind of. But, but yeah, if you tried to buy the same project today. Just what, less than a year later from, from when you, you signed on. It would cost you more, you know, quite a bit more. You probably wouldn't come close to what you're spending, so. It's, it's nice to see it getting done. I appreciate deeply that you've stuck with some of these costs, even though you had to swallow. You know, it's, it's nice to, to do it. We all love the building and, you know, it's, it's really a special place for the community, so.
I do want to ask, just in anticipation of future discussion, because I assume that there'll come one where. Where we might be talking about other pieces, thinking about, for instance, that the media space that the council uses future. Because I know we have. We've not had a, any formal discussions of any kind, but just like, you know. Offhanded conversations about audio and things like that. Will there be future discussions about any other? Modifications or. Things happening once the project itself is kind of set.
Yes, I think there will be, we can brace ourselves for a whole round of other things once we're back in that come to light. We are doing our best to both anticipate those things and address them as when we can and it makes the most sense, but also stay in budget here. So, but yes, there will be. More on that whole front. One thing that we've been kind of sorting out over the last couple of weeks as well, just so you know, is. There, we're moving to a key card access system for the doors. And only doing that for the doors that are necessary for the city spaces and getting into the building right now, but we're wiring for future. Needs going down the road. So there's stuff like that, that we're as best as possible, just at least trying to lay the groundwork while the walls are open and everything is accessible. But the in, in for the. Things necessary to pull all of that off is still a fairly decent expense in and of itself, so. We'll have lots of things to think through.
I think enhancements like the key guard.
Yeah.
Future.
Yes.
As an improvement from the previous system.
Yeah.
So.
It's. A very difficult system to put into place, come to find out.
John, we, we asked about whether or not there was any chance for further exploration of what existed. Is there any documentation of what has gone in behind the walls now? They do a three D scan of mechanical systems or electrical systems?
They're taking, again, they're, they're taking photographs of things before they get walled up. So the photographing isn't just, hey, look what we found, but it's also documenting progress and things in the walls. We can remind them to do that if they've only got stuff on, you know, drywall on one side, they got the access to everything. Their record keeping, where, where, we've asked them and will get as part of this project documentation, record drawings. So anything that changed from what we drew, they have to modify and give back to us as a markup. So you'll end up with a whole set of drawings and a digital version. So, you know, if, when most people throw them in the boiler room for some reason and leave them there for fifty years and, and then, you know. Am I right? So anyway, you will have the documentation for this at your disposal. There'll be binders for the maintenance people to kind of look at and keep track of, but there'll be a lot of graphic material that, that helps you. Know what's, you know, behind the walls and what's above the ceiling.
All right.
We see you now.
I've got it in front of me, so I'll just do it. I move the city council assigned four hundred thousand dollars in lot funds for this project, reassign an additional hundred thousand dollars in the building maintenance fund for this project. And authorize the city manager to complete the renovation of Two Lincoln with the not to exceed amounts as identified by staff herein and approve change orders and contract amendments as needed.
Second.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
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 Great.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I, I also want to say it's nice to see you. So many familiar faces that have been on the, the board long enough to. You know, the council to actually understand all of the things that we're going through right now, so thank you very much for your work and service to the community.
All righty. Six C, Discussion and Consideration of the City's Rebranding Request for Proposals. Ashley's with us. Thanks for hanging in there.
In front of you, you do have an R F P for our rebranding project. The ultimate goal of this project obviously is to create a longstanding recognizable brand identity for the city. One of the main. Parts of this project obviously will be a new logo that we want to be wide appealing for the majority of our community as a whole. But it'll also include things like, things like our letterhead, our report covers, memos, our signage that goes out. At the city entrances and our banners that'll go on our flag poles. Within this, we're also asking them to look at incorporating sub-brands for our departments so that we can have a better connection with our departments and our logos. So this project, I've basically broken up, I feel like into three kind of phases. The first one is this development of the R F P. And also establishing a temporary committee to help out with this process. I'm looking to have a council member to be a part of that and that's part of the request for tonight. The second phase of this process is really the design phase. This is where we'll work with the designer to create some options. For us to review back with the council and the community and get their feedback on before it ultimately comes back to the council to vote on as our final. Logo and then obviously the development of all the materials that we're asking the designer firm to put together for us. And then the final phase is really the changeover of the logo. So that is. Educating our staff or community on how to use a new logo, what our colors are, what our fonts are. Um, that's where that's uh, brand style guide will really come into place. Um, it's where we'll replace our um, entrance signs and all our banners on our uh, light poles. It's also, we'll start replacing all of our other logos, so things like the website, uh. Easy signage that's not going to cost us a lot of money, um, starting off with uh, replacement of uniforms when they're needed. Um, then we'll go into kind of a phased approach where we'll look at things like the the logos on the trucks. Um, any type of bigger cost signage that um, will be identified throughout the investigation process, which is at the beginning of the phase, which I didn't mention earlier, but. Uh, that is another part of the beginning. Um, and then finally, we'll have hopefully all of our, by year three, we'll have everything really changed over and then any other like. Um, uniforms or anything that we need to replace. In my memo, you will see a short uh, timeline that I tried to put together. Obviously, it depends on uh, what we hear back from the designer as well on this process, but I'm hoping. To have a logo by July. That is my goal right now, um, so that we can get those signs um, up and changed over. And our new logo out to our community. Um, I do have also a brief budget in the packet as well. Um, you guys um, allocated uh, 27,500 for this process. The only amount that uh, that I have gotten a bid from obviously is the signs. That was about two years ago, so I am going to need to get an updated quote for those, the signage and the banners. And then the quote for our website update is an actual figure that I recently got from our website provider. Um, I did add in here professional imagery of the ci- of the city. That's an uh, an item that was on our priority list. Um, but it's something that I wanted to work in because that will be a cost of hiring a photographer to take some good photos of our city. Um, so that is the uh, RFP and the project in a in a brief. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the RFP or the process or, um. If uh, you guys want to volunteer to be on the committee, that would be awesome as well.
I can do six.
Marcus, I'm shocked.
I have some questions.
Okay.
So, uh, I guess I want to understand if nothing else, maybe it's historical context or. Um, maybe there's a a logical reason, and I just want to understand the need for subbranding. Um, because I feel like. Based on my cursory understanding. Brownell and EGRP, those logos probably came from their historical development. Um, my understanding, I believe on the fire department is the association came up with with that. Um, it is colorized in a way that kind of fits their. Uniforms, generally speaking, but I and I'm saying this for simplicity. Um. And also, again. Providing that kind of uniformity across all the whole city. Because there is a disconnect in the current setup. And I'm a little afraid that we continue that if we continue. Having these subbrands.
Yeah, so I think, um, we, uh, thought about this. Um, I think those uh, per- those brands are created in their own processes. Um, and I think there's, um. A lot of logic. In keeping them in some way because they are distinctly different and say a lot about. Who they are and what they do. Um, you know, I think most, um. Uh, police departments, fire departments have a similar-ish kind of logo, right? Um, that is saying something different than a very. I don't mean to say it in this way, but a more generic municipal logo, like you can see the police department's logo right here. Um. So what we've, we've put these in here, um, to really get. Some insight from whoever's going to respond to this bid, like what is their suggestion that we can both honor these three, keep them distinctly different? Um, and because I think most of the community. Thinks of these three departments. In these ways, if we were to just say, scratch these brands, we're going to, you know, completely, um, uniform everybody. Um. That would be very confusing for people and I don't know that we have any real solid need or reason to do that. Um. But maybe there's some kind of color connection or something, you know, somebody smarter than me about this stuff, because I don't know. Um, maybe could give us some guidance on how we somehow make the connection better. Without doing away with those, but for the other folks that all use the same logo, Public Works, uh, Wastewater. Recovery Facility, right?
Right.
Um. You know, we would all have sort of a similar brand, but even within that concept, there's a subbranding where you could. You know, like if you looked at South Burlington's logos, they're all basically the same logo with like a little biker. Inside the logo instead of like somebody else who's obviously some other department that I can't think of right now.
Yeah, and that's a good, that's a good example. I was thinking, one of the, one of the, one of the things that came to mind was what the university. What UVM Medical Center has done between the medical center and the children's hospital. They're two very different logos. Um, they achieve separate things for themselves, but they're also driven by very different groups of people. Um, the other thing on is group people. So with that in mind, uh. I just want to throw out there, maybe we ask a trustee to join this particular group of committee members because of the. Burnout library logo as a part of this. Um, and the other is. Keeping on this timeline, I noticed that there is a community member that would be included in this particular group as well, so. Uh, is that? Do you think that's going to hamper or? You think we can find that community member in in a very short period of time in order to keep this timeline?
On the community member, I was going to point out that there's one, two, three, four, five. Five staff members, essentially, employees. And one community member. I realize we're going to do a lot of engagement, but I did, I was curious about that. Um, sort of similar tie-ins, sorry.
No, no, but I I agree with your point exactly, yeah. Because I don't, I, for me personally, I'm not. I know why we want this right away. But at the same time, I'm okay if we, in in order to assemble the right group. I'm I'm okay if it doesn't happen by July.
Yeah, and I think, um. Pull it, uh, pulling these folks. Together and how we pull these folks together is a is a good question in terms of are we, um. Are we putting out a call to folks? Are we asking the council to appoint that community member formally? I mean, I think we were trying to think of this as a little less of a formal kind of thing. Um, because it's not going to be, it's not a longstanding committee by any stretch that we are defining a role for in any kind of formal way. Um. So, uh, but that, this component of it is really up to you folks, like if you feel strongly somewhere or another that we also rebalance this in some way, like. We can, we can do whatever you folks think is the right thing to do.
Yeah, I I mean, I'm not suggesting this has to become a a full-on committee that needs to meet. Full-on open meeting law with the staffer and set meetings and appointments, um, the. I I don't believe, not to sideline your question because it's slightly related to the timeline. I don't want to hold this up. I don't want to overthink this. This is largely the job of the design firm and bringing their expertise in, so. I feel comfortable that Ashley has a good engagement, public engagement opportunity here. So I guess I'm just curious if anybody else has concerns about that. I I just noticed it, it was. But again, I don't want this to become another, you know. Full-on. Molasses speed.
Yeah.
Hang. Um, understanding really what we're trying to do is is get some branding, that's, you know. We don't need the UVM $5 million to get the yellow logo.
Right, yeah, and so like I kind of envisioned it as working with the graphic designer and they put forth five or six. Designs and then get input on those five or six designs and if there's a little bit of tweaking that needs to happen. With a group of people or the community has some feedback that they can provide to those designs that we could then go from there and. You know, and not move at the speed of government.
Yeah, I think this is, I think generally this should be fine. I mean, we have the strategic plan. We have all of these things that have just happened. We have some priorities. We have good words and themes and. All of that input that I'm sure Ashley will leverage, um, with this group to. Yeah. Elaine.
You want to, sorry, Elaine, just so once, oh, Ashley, you want to comment on anything that?
Yeah, jump in.
You've heard process-wise so far?
Yeah, and with the, with the com- the committee, I see it as something that is a working group more than, you know, like. We're going to have agendas and stuff like that. I, um, I also would hope that the people that are obviously interested in. The process of the logo design, but also maybe have some a little bit of experience, um, also with. Graphics or design would be great to have on this committee, um, just because it is a bit of a process developing new logos. Um, this will be my second time, uh, developing logos for an organization, so. Um, it can be a, um, technical process too. Um, so it would be great to have somebody who had a little bit of background, um, in that, um, but it's not necessarily for them to be on the committee. It's just something that. Uh, if they have an expertise, I would love to have that as well. Um, I didn't want this to be also a ginormous. Uh, committee as well, um, I just because there's a going to be a lot of opinions. On uh, this whole process and so, and we're still not going to get it right when we do do it, so. I will, I'm trying to think of all the, um, things that might uh, transpire in the process of it and my experiences that I've had in developing other logos with uh, other communities as well.
Um, just a couple of things. I want to make sure, I didn't see it in the RFP, but I want to make sure that. The company, whichever consultant we end up hiring, they're attentive also to the individual. Missions or slogans of the. Of, um, the Brownell and the EGRP, like EGRP is we create community out of people, parks and programs. They worked on that together as a mission statement, so I think we need to honor that. I believe the Brownell also has one, although I didn't see it on their website, but they had a strategic planning process. A while back and the result was this really fantastic and clever logo. And, um, that Le Brownell logo was divi- designed by Todd Logan. Who, um, also designed the uh, Essex Junction or the Five Corners Farmer's Market logo. And so he's done logo work for us in the past, so I would encourage. Asking him if he's interested in applying for the, for the RFP. Um, but I just want to make sure we're honoring the work that's already been done. On that side and that the Brownell is. Embarking in another, it's been five years at least, and so they're doing their strategic planning process again. And so they're in the middle of that. So this really intersects with it and I hope that that will be included.
I'll, I'll just simply go back to the fact that, um, I I. Agree with what's been said here, so. If nothing else. Maybe from a, uh, a group standpoint, because I can think of a couple of community members who do have. Some expertise in this area that would be be valuable in this context, because I think the biggest portion portion here, based on, again, the reading. Is going to be that engagement and outreach that needs to have, that will happen in this process. And I don't know if that's going to happen just by Chelsea at that, or sorry, by Ashley, or it's going to be, or it's going to happen through this. If it's an agency or or if it's just a designer, they probably won't have the capacity to do that, so. Um. That being said. I would probably like to see a little more staff come out of this to that point. Um. Even Regina, I would, I would say, you know. Just my feedback, I think. Let Ashley run with this. And, you know, if you want to add another staff member into that mix, feel free, but, um. You know, we can find somebody, I'm sure, within the five of us that can help participate and then we can just find them. Find actually a couple of community members who would be willing to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, or. Fill it out with, you know. Getting back to what Elaine just said. I I'm fine with the makeup. I think it's well thought out, Ashley. I, I. I wasn't going there in my head, but after, you know, everything Elaine said, I think. Maybe looking at some of those participants as being from the. The entities that have taken the time, Brownell, EGFD. EGRP. Just to grab their input in, not to inflate the committee, but to be some of the people that are on it, that's all. I'm sure you'll do great with this. Um. Glad it's moving along. Um, what is the ask again here? No action is needed, okay?
Bumped to you from.
Yeah, council.
Don't rush to it.
Lots of free time during the week. I'm happy to help.
I've heard.
I just keep putting that out there.
I'll nominate Tim Miller.
I'll second that.
Amber, are you okay with Tim doing it instead of you?
I'll third it.
It sounds like it's Tim. Thank you, Tim.
Sorry, Ashley.
Oh, no, we'll have fun, Tim, don't worry.
Yeah, it's going to be a good time. Um, I I guess I have one more question. Um. What, you know, the signs that are on the roads. At our entrances, at our arterials. Is that 27 or is that 26? FY26?
FY26, yeah.
Okay, alright.
That's, um, that 14375, that is money for those signs specifically. And for the banners that go on all the light posts down the main streets.
Okay, great.
Is that just the logo swap out theoretically or is that a whole potential sign changeover?
Would have to, I think it was a whole changeover of a sign. Um, I, I think that's in great, I I'd have to go look and see what's, how it's put on the signs. Um, if it's a vinyl thing that we can easily take off, that's obviously a lot easier than having something that's engraved into wood. Uh, most of the signs that are permanent signs within the city are engraved in the wood. Um, and, uh, when I said I SB Signs was the ones that did the uh, signs and I got the quote from them and I said, I basically want. These signs to be updated with a new logo, what would that cost us? And they costed it out based off of what they had done in the past.
Because I think it would be, I would be open to not, it doesn't necessarily have to be for this, but. You know, with that, we would consider what that new entry looks like in. In the city.
Yeah, I mean, uh, this is a level of detail we don't need to get into right now, but we do need to think through. Right now, there are other organizations on those entry signs and do those stay? What's the history there? What's the, what, there's. There's more things to sort out down the road. Yep, um, and I will just say again, back to the other. Lo- the distinct logos, fire department, uh, Brownell and EGRP. These budgets do not assume a changing of those, that level of signage all around the city, so. Um. That's at least not the budget that we're working with right now, so I do think. Uh, again, the intention at this point is to honor those logos, keep them in place. Just, we're asking this designer, as they're thinking through the new city logo, how do we? What's the right way to connect? In some way, shape or form there.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Ashley, do you have what you, do you have what you needed more as usual from us?
I do, you guys are going to have any changes to the RFP, so I will move forward with getting that out. Um, and then. What, what?
Elaine's suggestion, I think, is an edit to the RFP. Um, to just clarify, it's not just the logos associated with those. Other departments, but it's some more of their mission statement work.
Okay.
All right. Great. Thanks, Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley.
All right, so we, um. The last. Uh, business item is an executive session, so does anyone have, want to? Make a motion for the consent agenda?
Well, I'll move we approve the consent agenda.
Great.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, motion passes unanimously. Um, council member comments and city manager report. Anything?
Uh, so just want to make sure the community is aware, um, Champlain Water District is asking folks to conserve. Champlain Water District is asking folks to conserve water on Wednesday, April 16th, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So a week from today, April 16th, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. They are conducting a water treatment plant shutdown, so just hoping folks can help by conserving water that day. Also, thank you very much to the community for the support of our city budget for FY26 and our, um, pump station bond vote as well. Really, um, appreciate that. I know those are, continue to be very hard times for folks, um, but really appreciate that support.
I'm just going to, um, thank the two folks that put their names forward and their time and their energy to filling it's and what we're facing. So thank you for that. Any else? Okay, yeah, if you want to read the executive session, it'd be great.
I move the city council make the specific finding that premature disclosure of the contractual matters would place the city at a substantial disadvantage. I move the city council enter into executive session to discuss a contract pursuant to 1 VSA 313A1A to include the city council and city manager.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
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 Great. I don't believe we're coming back, um, at all, and I don't believe we're going to be that long. So for now, we're adjourned.